The work session is a process where we are responsible for looking at what has been done by the steering committee. We've already gone through one similar to this. We have given you the opportunity to look at what has been put together over now a three-year period. I feel like it's my best friend. I've been with it so long. Actually, it began in the spring of 2022. Over here in Lane Agri Park, we had somewhat of a festival of Odile that we put together showing where it was with Mayor Bill Kettering introducing it. And as we started, and at that time, we didn't even have a steering committee. Some of us wasn't even a part of a steering committee at that time. I wasn't even chairman of the planning commission at that time. So things changed in 2022. Different leadership, different individuals, and we went about trying to go more into what's called Plan Rutherford, or actually our comprehensive plan. I always have to go back to when we did our comprehensive plan back in 2010. And people need to understand history and where we began to understand how we have to end. And just so happened, I have a copy of what it looked like and what we continually use today. In fact, two weeks ago, on Monday evening, we were here dealing with a very important presentation to us. Aired Firearms Manufacturing Plant. And as we sat here and debated and discussed that, and we had individuals in the community come forward giving their suggestions and wants and not-wants and things of that type, we had to remind everybody that within this comprehensive plan, it showed all the way back to 2010 and 2011, that it showed that area as an area that would become a commercial area for that type of business. That we had already somewhat, I'm not saying predicted, but we somewhat said that this is starting to happen and occur. Studied the very same way that we have spent all the way from 2022 to today, looking at Rutherford County as somewhat trying to give some idea of what's coming forward down the pike. And now you have before you this, somewhat on the same manner, not as shiny and pretty as what you see here, but we're working towards this final end. And it goes through the same process. You have received, or I think they have received, it's on the website, different maps, our different GIS maps, where you can go and look at what we have worked on over the past several weeks, giving you more insight of what we had discussed, what we've looked at, a little bit of everything. In fact, yesterday, I sat there in my office, my farm office there at the house, going through those maps. And it was somewhat, you know, the little boy come out and me trying to put these filters over other maps just to see how they compare, how they work with it, where we have a little bit of, you know, the city limits, the activity center, everything that we had was in those maps. And I don't know if every one of you have done that yet, but it gives us a good insight of what's out there. Even where we are talking about where future roads are needing improvement to help with the infrastructure here in Rutherford County. And if you haven't done that, I urge you to do so because that's a lot of our answers of what we have to plan for, where we've got to go forward, where we've got to take care of these things. Also, the character areas, the character areas that we have defined of how we look forward with the land use planning here in Rutherford County. I've heard some people say, well, we don't need that. We don't need a character area. We don't need land use planning. I don't understand that. If we don't plan, you're going to end up with something you really don't want. All around us, everybody else has done it. City of Murfreesboro has, Smyrna's done, Laverne's done it, anybody that has municipality, other counties have done it. In fact, Tennessee Code annotated requires that you do this. City of Murfreesboro and theirs, I think they've already changed theirs three times. And as I have mentioned before, that ours becomes a living plan, something that also that we see that maybe if it's not exactly the way we want it, or something's new come about, ours will change also. And this is something that we'll be working about. But what we've got to do is get what we have together, put it together in something that becomes an important tool for you as a planning commission, for as a county commission, and for people to work with to have available to go forward in our planning for Rutherford County. You know, we don't have a gate out here anywhere to slow people down from coming into this county. They're coming. They're coming every day. I think every morning when I come down Highway 99, I get a new license plate. I don't know how many Florida tags I saw this morning. And I thought, why are you here? I'm wanting to go to Florida, and I hadn't been there in a while. But you're here. And then I look at another one, I say, well, that's New England, they're here. And I said, I can't get away from here because you're coming here. I've got to go do things to help you make it better for you. And that's what we're doing. We're taking care of the situation here. So we're going to get into this today, and I think I'm going to give it now to our director, Mr. DeBosi, and then we go from there.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the introduction. Just real quick before I get started, I do want to recognize we have folks here from the GNRC, that's our consultant team. We have Michael Skipper, he's the executive director, and we also have Jessica Hill. She's their planning director. I forget the exact title you have, Jessica, but I think that that's good for what we, for our purposes right now. But they've been, they put in a lot of work for this, and we just want to tell them how much we appreciate that, all the time and effort that went into this. There's been a lot of outreach, a lot of meetings and different things. So we'll go ahead and kind of jump right into the meat of our meeting today. This slide here just kind of shows you, these are just some screenshots of the Plan Rutherford website. This particular site has been active for quite some time. You can review the draft plan and the recommendations on this site. You can explore the maps and everything that are on here, take surveys, get involved with the process. You'll also see a couple of other screenshots there, just of the actual draft for public review. This is the same document that we'll be discussing today. In the bottom right-hand corner there, you'll see the current proposed character area map. We'll get into that again in a little more detail later, but that just kind of gives you just a quick overview of what's currently out there right now. Let me just, sorry. There we go. So I want to go over just briefly, just some general feedback that we've received. And like I said, we're going to get into some of this in a bit, a little more detail. Through all the meetings and things that we've had, all the feedback we've received, we did receive quite a bit, and a lot of it were on kind of similar themes, if you will. There was general support for the plan strategies to slow the high rate of farmland conversion. We also saw support for focusing growth within the urban growth boundaries. Again, we'll get into that here in just a little more detail in a moment. Also, support for coordinated planning with the municipalities, our county school board, county highway department, and utility districts in Rutherford County. But along with that support, there were also concerns that were brought up, concerns from those in those areas, concerns from some of the other affected stakeholders like our builders and our realtors, concerns about the county's ability to provide the necessary infrastructure and services to these areas, concerns about the plan's impact on property rights, again, we'll get into that here in a moment, concerns about the plan's impact on economic growth. There was also, I think, some underlying confusion about the plan adoption itself and subsequent updates to the regulations, like our zoning ordinance or our subdivision regulations. And there was also some discussion about coordinating with the proposed I-24 improvements by T-Dot, the choice lanes on I-24. You guys have probably heard about that. So after, well, actually, before our last work session that we had, the Middle Tennessee Association of Realtors submitted a list of, I believe it was six questions, and I handed out to you a copy of our responses to that. We came up with some draft responses. GNRC also helped us as far as kind of fine tuning some of those responses as well. You have those as a handout in front of you today. Those in the audience also, I think I've got everybody in the audience that has a copy of that. If somebody comes in late, just let me know, and we can make sure they get a copy as well. But I'd like to do is kind of walk through those slide by slide here. I'm not going to take the document that you have, I'm not going to read it verbatim because that doesn't really serve anybody, and quite frankly, it probably get boring after a moment or two. But I do kind of want to talk through some of the high points of that. And obviously, if there's questions or any concerns, follow-up or anything like that, we'll be happy to do that at that point. So the first one I'm going to talk about is just traffic congestion. And now you'll notice that the slides here, these aren't the questions word for word, but they, for the most part, kind of encapsulate what the question was about. How does the plan's priority to guide growth within urban growth boundaries help alleviate traffic congestion across the county? And that pretty much is the, just kind of a summary of question one, so that's the one we're going to be talking about right now. But before, well, actually, to respond to that, like I said, I'm not going to read this word for word, but what I do want to say first is I think we need to understand just the, kind of the brief history of the urban growth boundary law, Public Chapter 1101, that was passed in the late 90s, what the intent of that was in the first place. This was adopted again back in the late 1990s. Basically, what it did was it required the counties and the municipalities within each county to talk to each other, to try to figure out what areas were going to be more prone or more able to be annexed, identify areas that might be areas for future growth, but maybe new incorporations, and then the rural areas. So you had it broken down into three categories. You had your urban growth boundaries, you had your planned growth areas, and you have your rural areas. In Rutherford County, we identified urban growth boundaries for Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, and Eagleville, and we identified the rest of the area as rural area. There were no planned growth areas identified for Rutherford County back at that time. And that was adopted formally, again, in the late 90s, corresponding with the mandates of Public Chapter 1101. So what we're talking about here with these urban growth boundaries is not a new concept, okay? This is something that's been on the books for over 20 years. Of course, every year, it seems like the legislature has some sort of a bill that tries to do away with that. Thankfully, to this point, that has not been successful. So what we're looking at here is Plan Rutherford kind of expanding on that by what I would say is reaffirming those boundaries. It helps manage traffic, helps manage safety and health concerns by trying to encourage that development closer into the urban growth boundaries where there's existing infrastructure to handle that kind of growth. Now, that's not to say that we're never going to see any kind of growth in the unincorporated areas, these more rural areas. I think what it's really trying to do is it's trying to say, okay, growth in those areas is appropriate if the infrastructure is there to support that growth. So that's really what I think Plan Rutherford is trying to ultimately do, understanding that, yes, your infrastructure is going to be closer to the municipalities, so it makes more sense to have the growth in those areas, but also understanding that, yes, we are going to see growth in those outlying areas to some extent. So it's just a matter of identifying what areas are more prone for that kind of development and which areas are not. And I will go a little further to say that as part of this plan, you do see in the later chapters, you see the recommendation of different routes for the unincorporated area that should be improved or looked at for improvements, similar to what you see in our current long-range transportation plan, or even within the cities and their transportation plans. Of course, this is something that requires coordination, and this will be a theme you'll see several times as we talk through these responses today, coordination with the municipalities for these kind of improvements. We recently just set up a, something we've done in the past, is we have quarterly meetings with our planning and engineering staff, with the staffs of the municipalities, just to kind of talk through some of the issues that we're having, kind of talk through the growth that we're seeing in different areas and different things we need to do to respond to that. We have not met in a while for various reasons. However, we have just scheduled the meeting here, early, mid-June, I believe, to reestablish those meetings and those connections. So, and I will say, even outside of those meetings, we still have, you know, open lines of communication between, let's not say for myself, myself and my contemporaries in Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, even Eagleville as well. So that's kind of our general response to the first question. Like I said, I'm not going to just read these verbatim here, but just go question by question. Next one, and this is a pretty big one here, is affordable housing, housing affordability. How does the plan address the need for a diverse housing inventory in Rutherford County, and what strategies does it propose to mitigate the ongoing affordability challenge? That's going to be, these aren't going to be just perfectly in order with the questions that you have, but this is going to be consistent with, I believe it's the third question on here. Yes, this is question three that you'll see on here. So as I said just a moment ago, as far as municipal collaboration, housing affordability is definitely something that we feel is important. And that is not just an issue that we're dealing with here, this is a nationwide issue. I know we've all heard about this, I know we've all talked about this. But as I've said during the process, this is not something that we're going to be able to solve in and of ourselves with this one planning document. This is going to be something that's going to require the coordination between ourselves and the municipalities to come up with solutions to try to get a hold of this, of this issue, if you will. Some of the strategies that are proposed in the plan, and again, these are potential strategies, this is not an exhaustive list by any means, encourage policy changes to allow for greater density where feasible, conduct a housing needs assessment to guide future land use decisions, exploring incentives like density bonuses, or even expedited zoning and permitting processes, these are examples, again, supporting accessory dwelling units, ADUs, and shared housing models with template and/or pre-approved designs. Again, these are not an exhaustive list by any means. For example, I will say, as far as accessory dwelling units are concerned, I think we are the county at least, I think we do a pretty good job on regulating those. That doesn't mean that there aren't room for improvement, you know, there's different ways to handle that situation. Go ahead, Michael, I'm sorry. It looked like you were about to ask a question.
Oh, I was going to ask, if we have, is there a working definition for what affordable housing is? What does that, what does that even mean in today's situation in Rutherford County?
Right. I don't have just a ready-made definition for you right now, but I think that's part of this whole process, you know, as we talk about collaboration with the municipalities. I think coming up with some sort of a working definition of that, I think, is appropriate. Now, I know that there are definitions that HUD has out there as far as how much income one has versus how much they're spending on their housing, their cost burden, if you will. But I would submit, it's not just the housing cost, I think that's part of it, and I'm not saying that's not important because it is. But I think we need to think even broader about not just affordable housing, but an affordable lifestyle. It's okay to have an affordable house, I mean, that's great, we all want that. But if your affordable house is in an area that requires you to drive 10, 15 miles in every direction to get to your basic services, to get to schools, to get to shopping, to get to, you know, whatever, retail, then you're looking at increased costs for gas, you're looking at increased costs for vehicle maintenance and things like that. It all plays together. Yes, housing is an important aspect of this, and it's one that we do need to consider. But I think it goes even beyond that. So I will say that that is something that, agreed, there needs to be some sort of a working definition on.
May that be a little note that we could add to make sure that it's a, I don't know, a definitions page or something in here, that we could maybe include that as one of them? I like your, I like what you said, it's not just about the mortgage payment, it's about what does it cost to live in that particular spot in that location? And this is just hard, so thank you.
That's actually in his answer here and your copy out there, what he has said here.
Yeah, and if there's questions as we go through this, like I said, I'm more than happy to, you know, please feel free to raise your hand and interrupt, that's fine, please. I do better in that environment anyway. So moving on to the next question, are there documented problems that have occurred in the county with wildlife, natural geology that justify the recommendations for the new regulations? This is going to correspond to the next question, this is question four on your, on your list. And what I would say, how these regulations might impact development, housing costs, and those kind of things, there were some concerns brought up about tree ordinances, wildlife impact evaluations, those kind of things, as we looked at this. I want to say first of all, this plan is making recommendations, okay? A lot of this, that this particular question, that these responses will answer, really deal with Chapter Five in the plan, preserving character. There were concerns about the tree ordinances, wildlife impact evaluations, updated landscape standards, those kind of things. The goal overall, I think, of the plan is to preserve open space and protect sensitive environmental features. Now, that's something that we currently do, those are concerns that we currently have. Our existing regulations already require both residential, non-residential developers to identify and also preserve existing vegetation where feasible. So again, this is not a new concept. This practice often saves developers money, especially when it comes to non-residential development, when it comes to things like buffer zones and things like that, because a lot of the times, developers don't want to tear out everything just to have to replant it. So they're going to work with their sites as best they can to preserve these areas as best they can, which is something, again, that's what we are encouraging. So also, the issues with the landscape ordinance and different things, those are typically reserved for non-residential development adjacent to housing. We currently don't require any kind of buffering between residential subdivisions, especially if they're like zoned. Now, sometimes if there's a multifamily development or something, yeah, there'll be a little buffer between the multifamily and the single family. That's currently existing, that's not something that we're proposing, that's nothing that's new. When it comes to things like wildlife and geology and those kind of things, of course, we all know that there is a significant amount of car stopography in Rutherford County. We deal a lot with sinkholes. I don't think there's a meeting that goes by where we don't have some kind of a discussion about sinkholes and what the underground drainage looks like. But it's not just that, of course, it's the above-ground drainage. We've had plenty of meetings where we have those discussions. Mr. Hughes and his staff do a remarkable job keeping us straight in those regards and keeping, you know, the properties that we look at, making sure they're not affecting adjacent properties, and keeping up with the stormwater laws and things like that. Some of these things that we look at as far as endangered species habitats, cultural, historical resources, things like cemeteries and burial sites on properties, those are layers that we currently have. We already evaluate sites when we see these kind of things. So overall, really what we're talking about here is not so much adding new regulations, but revising existing codes, maybe modernizing them to look and function better in today's environment. When some of these were originally approved, some of them have been, it's been several years, just a matter of going in, are we still being responsive to the amount of growth and to the issues that we're seeing in our development applications that we're receiving? So that's kind of what we're looking at in that regard. Proposed incentives, this is the next, this goes along with question five. You know, are there proposed incentives or strategies to offset increased development costs, such as tax abatements or expedited permitting? You'll notice that the response on this one is probably not as long as some of the others. Just to say that at this time, no analysis or study has been done to evaluate, determine whether or not the proposed recommendations of the plan would increase or decrease development costs. Now, something, well, I'll get to that here in a minute, I don't want to jump ahead. But we do recommend, however, some potential issues and things for looking at development costs and whatnot. We do acknowledge the importance of tracking how our policies do affect development costs, especially when it comes to housing. I will say, however, that I don't think, while, I'm not saying that regulations as far as, you know, land use regulations, building, fire codes, those kind of things, we do know that those, you know, will result in some increased costs to development. I don't think anybody's denying that. But there's a lot out here that, quite frankly, are outside of our control when it comes to development costs, things like labor costs, things like material costs, interest rates. Those are things that affect that cost of housing, especially that we just have no authority over, you know, we have no way to really address that kind of thing. We can look at it from the standpoint of, you know, what do our codes, what, you know, impact can those have on that? Absolutely, we can do that. But some proposed strategies that we could look at, again, this gets back to what we discussed a little bit earlier, density bonuses for residential, commercial plan developments, potentially, again, expedited permitting for certain things, and flexible zoning tools, these are things that we can explore with or without an adopted plan. And I just want to make sure that while this plan does not make any specific recommendation for a specific strategy, there are strategies out there, and I think that if that's something that the planning commission would want staff to look into, that we could, that we could kind of do parallel with what we're looking at here. So down zoning implications, does this plan recommend down zoning? Now, this is going to be slide, well, it's, yeah, this is question, let me see here, I believe question six, yeah. So, does a plan recommend down zoning? If so, why and how will these changes impact private property rights? Quite frankly, that's a big concern of ours, I know it's a big concern of those who brought this up, and this is something that we deal with on a daily basis, quite frankly, when it comes to private property rights versus the regulations that are in place. Few topics really generate more concern or even confusion than talking about down zoning, so we'll talk about that here for a moment. The plan does propose, again, recommendations for down zoning in certain rural areas, which means reducing the allowable density of development in the rural preserve and the rural living areas. Now, that's something we'll talk here in a little bit more detail about, about what does that look like as far as a potential down zoning. Of course, adoption of the plan doesn't mean that the zoning changes automatically, okay? I mean, that's something I do want to make sure that we are all clear about, that even in the event that this plan is adopted, regardless of what the recommendations say, the zoning is still the same, the land use controls are still the same, nothing has changed at that point, you know, that's where the implementation comes into play. We did hear very loud and very clearly, an intent to preserve agricultural lands, protect sensitive natural areas, reduce the rate of farmland conversion. And I will also say that down zoning is not a new tool, and it's not even the first time that we've done it here in the county. There are adjacent counties as well that have used this, you know, Williamson County has done that. I'm not saying we want to do it like Williamson County. Wilson County has done it. I'm not trying to say we want to be like Wilson County. But this, again, this is something that has been done before. I will say that when we adopted the zoning, our current zoning ordinance back in 2013, we rezoned half of the unincorporated area from the 15,000 square foot minimum to a one acre minimum. So again, it's not even the first time we've done it, so, Michael, go ahead.
Before that happened in 2013, didn't we have zoning before, prior to 2013?
Yes, we did.
Can you give, and you may not know this off the top of your head, but can you educate me on Rutherford County's adoption of zoning, different regulations? Because I know even today, in some of our neighboring counties are very close, they don't have any zoning at all. You can do whatever with any piece of property, but that is not the case in Rutherford County. Can you tell me about the history of that?
Right, well, I'll go into the wayback machine here for just a minute. Zoning in Rutherford County was originally adopted back in the 60s. I don't, yes, sir, I don't remember the exact date or anything, but we've got old planning commission minutes in our office, and I've kind of gone through those in the past, and it's been, it's the early, mid-60s is what you see. The first, I guess I'll call it overhaul, if you will, of the zoning ordinance was back in 1984. That's really what established the R-15, 50,000 square foot lots, as we see quite a bit. There were some other zoning designations in there for R-40, which is basically an acre lot, it's a little less than an acre, but there wasn't just a whole lot of area that was zoned that way. Predominantly, when I started working for the county in 2006, that's what we were under, everything was zoned R-50, except for commercial areas, planned developments, and things like that. So when we started the process of our last comprehensive plan, our current plan that we're under right now, there were recommendations made that some areas, those areas being within the general urban area and the suburban belt, remain three units an acre in zoning, and then areas that were more identified in the rural character area, those were recommended for one unit per acre. That was the basis for the zoning that we have in place right now. So we have the 15,000 square foot, the RM, we call RM zoning now, for about, I would say, if you look at the overall land, it's about half zoned RM, and the other half is zoned RL, which is residential low density, that's the one unit per acre. So that was adopted back in 2013. Now, you know, back on to that, you know, the recommendation, when we first saw these recommendations for the new character areas, you know, the rural recommendations for the, the new character areas, you know, the rural living, rural preserve, you know, the original densities looked at something like in the rural preserve, especially like 10, 15 acre minimums, and then things kind of, you went into the rural living, then that was somewhere in the five acre range, one to five acre range, and then you got into the urban growth boundaries, which was, you know, about three units per acre, the RM that we see now. Discussions we had at the steering committee at that time was, first of all, there, it was not going to be practical for us to try to enforce a 10 or larger acre minimum in the more outlying areas, simply because once you hit the five acre, you know, you can do it, somebody can go out there and just get a surveyor and survey the property. I said, I don't want to be the person that, somebody comes in to build a house and they have five acres of land, and I say, oh, you don't meet the zoning, you can't do that. There's no oversight in our office at that point. So what we recommended as staff, and I think what the steering committee, and Pettis, correct me if, if you think I'm mistaken here, but what we recommended in the preserve area, and that's, we'll get to the maps here in a little bit, but the preserve area was going to be, that would be the five acre minimum area. And incidentally, the original comprehensive plan actually made recommendations to that effect. There were some areas that were originally recommended in our current plan for five acres that largely resembled what the current, what the proposed plan is recommending. However, after discussion, those went to one acre. So basically, we had three units per acre and one acre, which is how we ended up with the zoning we have now, so.
So would it be an accurate statement to say that the comprehensive plans are a guidebook to help formulate the, the zoning ordinances?
Yes. That's, that's the way you want to do it.
Right.
You want to be able to make, yeah, and the idea is when the plan is adopted, that any land use decisions you make are consistent with that plan. Because from a legal standpoint, and I will preface that by, I'm not a lawyer, but from a legal standpoint, when you're making decisions consistent with adopted plans, it's not that you can't get sued, because you, we all know you can get sued for just about anything, but if you're doing it consistent with an adopted plan, you, I think, provide yourself a lot more legal cover than if you don't.
We, we just spent some time discussing sidewalks, and that you brought the point, we couldn't deny that neighborhood because it didn't have sidewalks, because that wasn't a part of our neighborhood regulations. The, the neighborhood regulations are designed based upon what the comprehensive plans suggest or, or, or kind of lays out, but the comprehensive plan itself is not the, is not, has no enforcement arm to it, correct?
Correct. Now, again, if it's adopted by the full county commission, then anything that you do from a land use standpoint needs to be consistent. So if it's just a planning commission adoption at that point, it becomes more of a, of a recommending document, if you will. If you do have your legislative body adopt it, then it's got a little more teeth as far as the recommendations go, but like I said, that's where consistency, you want to be consistent regardless, you know, quite frankly, so.
Let me say something, you, you mentioned the sidewalks that we discussed. The, I, I remember this quite well, when we were working on the other comprehensive plan. That was a recommendation, that we thought sidewalks would be possibly a good idea in some of these outlaying areas that, that had developments, that sidewalks would help. But once we did that, when it come back into zoning or whatever, nobody thought, hey, that's not going to work. And it got, it wasn't there. So it was taken away. And I think there's, I know Mike was on, at that time, you were there when we did that. Of course, Chairman was around then. Jim, it's just certain things that come out of a comprehensive plan that are recommendations that at the time sound pretty good, good ideas, but then when you get to the point of bringing it up for the zoning, it's a little different situation. I know we have talked so much about agricultural preservation. Back in 2010, that was also discussed then. We had these maps that you see here. We had green spots all over this thing back in 2010, when it was first put out there. And we took it for a public hearing out here, and the farmers saw it. The green spots disappeared. They didn't want to be preserved. That made you feel real good. But at that time, everybody was wanting everything to be pretty much residential. They were protecting the opportunity to sell something and whatever. Today, you have farmers that are wanting to protect the opportunity to continue farming and protect what they've got. So it's how it, how it changes. And it's none of it's done to, to downzone or to attack somebody's property rights. It's, it's really not done that way, it's just the time that it occurs. I know members of the steering committee, actually, we actually talked to individuals about what could be done to give farmers an opportunity to give them some type of credit if they allow their land to be done a certain way or whatever. No way it can be done, not at a county level or anything of that type. Just so happened at the state legislature, though, it has been, been approved by the, the Farmland Preservation Act, where you got a trust fund that can help and do something there. But what we found out as we went around talking to the trustee and different people like, there, there's just not anything where you could do to protect, that wouldn't be possibly illegal or something you could do there. So it's amazing what the steering committee went around trying to do for the benefit of the citizens of Rutherford County, but yet we find out what you can do and can't do. Is that not right, Commissioner P? That you find out you can't do some of these things? And what people seem to think that we were out here trying to do some things in that manner, you couldn't do it. But I think your steering committee went about trying to do the best that they could for the betterment of all the citizens of Rutherford County. And when these questions come about, you see that, and we know what could be done and couldn't be done, it makes you really think that, no, it, it's here. So, and especially if you ever had to deal with two comprehensive plans, it shows you right quick that, hey, it's, it's somewhat of the same manner in what you're trying to do. You're, you're trying to deal with what you, what you have, and you're looking for the future of how we can do it. I think when we throw up the maps here for you to see, when you see what we're looking at, at what the future can be done as far as helping, having to move the traffic, how we can move the traffic, but what you've got to understand, these roadways are not going to come tomorrow night. It's not going to be. You're going to see horses come up or cones come up, and all of a sudden, the next day, there's going to be roads out there. It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that fast, and that's pretty much it.
And I'll finish up at this particular question, just to say, as far as downzoning is concerned, like I said, the recommended densities and things, we'll talk a little bit more about that here in just a moment with the maps. But I do want to stress, so everybody's clear, and I've said this earlier, but I'm going to say it again, just because I think it's important, is the fact that even if the plan is adopted, the zoning doesn't change from what it currently is today. So if it's zoned RM now, it's going to be RM. If it's even after adoption, if it's zoned RL, it's going to be RL. In order to make changes to the zoning, like Pettis was saying, so these things don't happen overnight. When we adopted our last comprehensive plan, our current one, you know, that was adopted in April of 2011. We followed that up immediately with updating our zoning ordinance and our zoning map, okay? That map and that ordinance took effect January 1st of 2013. So that was almost a two-year process, not quite, but almost a two-year process. So as Pettis was saying, you look at the recommendations that are made, you start moving in that direction, and if you have to kind of change gears a little bit while you're going through that process, that's just part of it. You know, we can't change the zoning without going through the public hearing process. I mean, that's, that's like a zoning change like anything else. If we add new provisions to the zoning ordinance, that has to go through the process. We've done that dozens of times here. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear, regardless of what direction this ends up going, and what densities we end up recommending, even if we adopt the plan, the zoning does not change. That has to follow its own process, so just as long as we're, we're clear on that. So some final thoughts here, I believe that, well, I'm sorry, there's one more question. Has a cost-benefit analysis been?
Before, before you leave that, I, I've tried my best to keep my mouth shut, but I'm not able to, and I apologize. If I could make a statement, we, governing body, our hearing, are from people who live out in the county. They're warning us, in essence, begging us, take a look at what Rutherford County could look like 20, 30, 40 years from now. That's what this plan is supposed to do, is to help us and help the citizens of the county develop that vision. For us not to do it, everything that we've seen that has happened over the last 25 years will continue to happen, and that vision will not exist. That's what this thing does. It gives us some type of a vision into the future, protects Rutherford County from becoming a metropolitan type of a county. That's what the citizens are asking us to do. Twenty years ago, very few commercial and industrial developments were happening outside of an incorporated area. Now, two-thirds to three-quarters of them are happening in the unincorporated areas of the county. All of those things have to come together. That's what this plan hopefully will help us develop that vision. Without a vision, we have no place to go. Like going on vacation, but you don't know where you're going to go. Has to be, has to be something. You can't just make decisions for this year. For us not to develop some of these things that we're talking about right now, it is no vision at all. Has to be what's in the long-term best interest. Not of a group, not of individuals, but as a county as a whole. Rural areas that are left are the areas that people will probably want to move in. Twenty-five years ago, we're moving in, that they say now are not rural anymore. How many times have we heard? Almost every time, development's coming in. I moved here 20 years ago because of the dear world and the rural community of the country. Those things hardly or barely exist anymore in Rutherford County. There's a few of those areas left. Development of our commercial and industrial in those urban growth factors and high density where a lot of the affordable housing develops and the repeat today is where it belongs. And that's what this thing tries to do. Say, this is better suited for that type of development. If you want to live in the country, the rich world has also set aside to be able to do. It's also set aside to protect some people who still want to operate a farm. My mind, back in 1992, F. Phillips. Thought process of long-term lands. It's been near and dear to me for well over 30 years. This is a situation that if we develop this plan, I will not live. What I care about are my kids and my grandkids and my neighbors and friends. This, if we don't do this, and we don't do it right, what will happen will exactly what continues to happen right now. A long-term land use plan is just that. These are areas that are suitable for that. These are areas that we're protecting for people. I don't know how else to say it. Downzoning, how do you downzone something that's already in the country? Protect people, ideas of how they want to live. You've got people that want to live. Five-year-old, five and up, community. Those are tiny lots. Kind of attractive to me, something like that. But for young families that may want to live in rural areas, that's what it tries to do to them as well. I don't know how else to say it, I don't know. The place I have to say it is that this plan protects the citizens of Rutherford County and gives some industrial, commercial growth a place to be considered, and it also coordinates our activities with our growth. It's paid and puts a good base. Whole deal, here is that. What's your, what's your pitch? Citizens have a long-term of that. What should happen is, we want to be another place to happen. We want to be another panel, they want to be another non-state. We're rapidly approaching two of those counties that are missing. I don't know, that is definitely what we want to accomplish, but that's not what we've been hearing from the citizens of Rutherford County. The legacy of mine, that's exactly what they're telling us. I don't know how else to say it, and I can't remember what, when I recall it, because I can remember, I can remember that. And we're separated. And now they're not. There's one big hole right there. There's a farm, both of them, both are involved. Both connected to the. There are some areas that I. That people want to live and call it rural. That means pretty much. Stating that's what the urban development is. Sorry, I want to off. Not about me, it's not. My time here is short. The clock is ticking on me, but. People who care about Rutherford County, of people who have been here a long time, developers. Certain care of names that we talked about a little bit earlier, but those people, I trust, and I trust them to do the right thing. Both of developing our county from somewhere other than Tennessee. Have to add protection to our land, have to add this. And I hope, I hope that this planning commission, and pray that the full county, listen to what the steering committee is coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that. Just, I believe this is the, let me just a little check, yeah, this is the, the last question here. Has a cost-benefit analysis been conducted for new regulations in order to measure their potential impact on the county or its overall economy? This is the second question, I believe, on your list. And the quick answer to that question, has one been done at this point? No. And I think the reason one has not been done yet is because we're still working through the recommendations of this. Now, that being said, I will say that the plan does make a specific recommendation under proposed actions in chapter four, that some sort of fiscal impact analysis be done for any kind of land use decisions that are going to be made as the result of this plan. for any kind of land use decisions that are going to be made as the result of this plan. We think that's a good idea. So, it's probably not appropriate right now, because we're still working through the process as far as what this is gonna look like, but in time, is that something that we should undertake? The plan is making that recommendation that yes, that is something that does need to be looked at. So, I think that's all I'm really gonna say about that. Again, I'll point you to the responses itself. Just a couple of closing thoughts before we get into requested changes for the final draft. Just a couple of things I just wanted to make sure that got said, and I know Pettis already dealt with some of this. As he said a little earlier, I'll just reiterate, that this plan is not meant to be something, when it's adopted, that it's adopted and it never changes, okay? It's meant to be a living document. Amendments are able to be made on this, you know, if things, you know, obviously, we can't first see what's gonna happen in the next five days, let alone the next 20 years. Sometimes things happen, developments come along that require us to take a closer look at the recommendations of the plan, and if changes need to be made, they can. And that would go through the same process as we're going through right now. For amendment, probably wouldn't be quite as extensive as what we're looking at right now, but it would require public hearings, it would require input, those are things that we want to see. I will also say that as, regardless of what ends up being adopted, and if any zoning changes are made as a result of the recommendations of this plan, that does it does not forego the ability for somebody to ask for zoning changes. Again, things change. This is not meant to be a static document for the next 15, 20 years. The zoning ordinance is not meant, and the zoning map are not meant to be static documents for the next 15 to 20 years. We change the zoning map monthly, as you all know, with all the public hearings that we've had here. So, regardless of what we come up with, we're not stuck with it for the next 15, 20 years. Changes can be made, we can adapt, if need be, to changing circumstances. So I think that's important to realize as well. Does anybody have any questions about the actual responses themselves, or the presentation I made on that? If not, we'll go into the next phase, which is the requested changes for the final draft. Now, these are things that we have talked about, and this one, we're gonna start getting into the maps themselves here in a little bit, I've got a link here that we'll pull up here in just a minute. But some of the things that we need to be able to provide some guidance to GNRC for the final document, you know, that's going to be going out for public hearing, you know, we need to make sure we identify and delineate the plan's formal policy language from the set of recommended non-binding actions. Clarify the role of the plan's formal policy relative to associated regulations established by other county ordinances. Incorporate the language to address the plan's relationship to the issue of housing supply and affordability, water supply and quality. That's something else that I know that we've received some comments on as far as the water that's out there, and how that impacts future growth, other aspects of community infrastructure. These are probably the bigger ones, not that these are all not important, but the other ones. Update residential density ranges of our suburban character areas to reflect the desire for additional development opportunities. And of course, incorporate our higher quality visualizations, that's as part of the plan itself as we get into that. But let me just go ahead and pull up the map here, okay? This map that you're seeing right here, I think it's on the screen, yeah. This is the current recommendation in Plan Rutherford. You can kinda see the different character areas here, I'll kinda run through these. This darker, this brownish color, if you wanna call it that, right through here and here, that's the rural preserve area. Those are the areas on the far reaches of the county. That's the recommended, that we would at least recommend, if there's gonna be a minimum presented, it'd be a five-acre minimum. I'm gonna skip over this darker green right now and go into the urban growth boundaries. These areas in yellow here are the urban growth boundaries. This is around Eagleville, of course, Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, in these areas. The recommendation of the county suburban area, if you will, the areas within the urban growth boundaries, those are areas that we would just recommend. As far as the zoning, we probably leave that alone as far as densities are concerned. The current zoning allows up to three units per acre. If it's something that we desire, we could look at the possibility of looking at some changes to that. I think most of the concerns and most of the discussion I've had with people really deal with this darker green area through here. And that's the rural living area. That rural living area originally was looking at about five units, I'm sorry, five acres per unit as a recommended density. What staff would prefer to see, honestly, would either be one of a couple different approaches, either some sort of a step-down, as you will, coming from the rural preserve into the county suburban areas, where you're looking at maybe some higher lot sizes toward the boundaries, and then coming into the urban growth boundaries. You kinda step it down as you go in, so maybe it starts out one to two-and-a-half acres, something like that, and you get here and close to here, it's maybe two units per acre or something like that, and then you get into the urban growth boundaries. That's an example that you could do. You could just recommend one particular density in this area, be it two units per acre, one unit for two-and-a-half, one unit for two-and-a-half acres. It's really kind of up to you how you would recommend this to go forward. The other areas you see on here, these light green areas, these are kind of the crossroads areas, what we currently call our rural centers, if you will. These areas here are what are called activity centers. These are centered around our current employment centers. This is Epsomil-, I'm sorry, this is Almaville Road and 840, Epsomil Road I-24, 840 and 452, the racetrack up in this area. These are what you're seeing in those areas. So it fairly mimics fairly closely the recommendations of the current comprehensive plan. Now, something that we had some discussion on, and I think this is kinda where we really wanted to go with this, is looking at these suitability maps. The suitability analysis, and give it a second to draw here. When we looked at this at our last work session, you'll remember, and I know this is probably hard to read right here, but the areas that we're looking at here, this darker green area indicated that you had high marketability and high developability potential. These other areas here either had one or the other, or they were both low. Either they were low from a marketability standpoint, but had higher potential for growth, or kinda flip-flop that. Or like I said, they're both in this lighter, the most, the lightest color of the four was a, both low. In other words, these are gonna be areas that were gonna be difficult to develop for one reason or another. So what we talked about, and obviously, it's difficult to see, but you can see that a lot of these areas obviously are within the municipal limits right through here, through Murfreesboro, Smyrna, Laverne, obviously Eagleville and these areas. But you do kinda see some bleed over into the more rural areas of the county for some of these darker green areas. And something I think that we talked about during our last work session, and Mr. Everwater, I think you had some specific comments on that, was looking a little more closely on this map. We can also add some, some other layers on here, which I think is, you start putting too much stuff on here, obviously you can't see everything, so I mean, you can put the character areas. But if you look at some of the recommended transportation projects through Plan Rutherford, and even our regional current plans that we've got in our regional transportation plan, I mean, you can see that these high marketability, high developable areas are following a lot of these major corridors up and down through here. So, when it comes to, you know, looking at any potential changes to the character areas, which is this map here, you can look at it either from this standpoint, we could make some changes based on the suitability to this. This is kind of, I think, ultimately what we're trying to shoot for here. What's this final map gonna look like for these recommendations of these character areas? And I think that's kinda some of the discussion we'd like to have today on that. So I'm happy to, you know, answer any questions to, you know, at this point, but I'd like to get some input from the planning commission about that. Again, I will reiterate, we do have representatives here from GNRC for any further background information we might wanna have on any of this, but just kinda wanna open it up for discussion at this point.
I have a question. Doug, this is a lot of information we've gone over. Could you go back to the character areas?
Yes.
Now, the preserve, you're saying five acres minimum lot.
Correct.
And the rural county sub-, or the green?
This darker, yeah, darker green, okay.
They're saying one acre, and you're saying kind of a rolling, toward the rolling-
There's different ways to do it, right. Yeah, I mean, if we're comfortable with one unit per acre, fine, you know, I don't necessarily have a problem with that, but yeah.
In the urban growth boundaries, you're saying three units per acre, correct?
Correct. Leave the zoning at the way it currently is.
How does this, how does this compare to what it is currently?
Right now, generally what you're looking at from our zoning map, I'll tell you, I'll just, if you bear with me just a second. Helps if I learn how to type. Actually, that's not what I wanted, sorry. I'm just gonna turn on the zoning map here, just as an example, kinda show you. Okay. This is kinda what I was talking about a little bit earlier, as far as the, kinda the breakdown of RM versus RL zoning. RM, which is a three-units-per-acre zone, is everything in orange. Of course, you see some of these little purple and red and blue, of course, those are, you know, non-residentially zoned property. Everything in yellow here is currently one unit per acre, okay? Now, if you go to the character area map, what you're seeing is predominantly everything in the urban growth boundary would stay three units per acre. So that's pretty much, not gonna go out as far as the current RM zoning. And these areas mostly, I think it's gonna be remaining, so most of these areas up through here are a part of an urban growth boundary, either Smyrna or Murfreesborrows. You start getting out a little further here, you start getting into areas that are outside of the urban growth boundary on this map. So this is pretty much within the urban growth boundary, this yellow area here. In this area, if you were to keep one unit per acre in these green areas, you would see, again, most of this yellow area through here is gonna be that way. But we're gonna see some differences, as is these outlying areas here, in these darker brown, kinda those areas right along the border to Bedford County, Coffee County, even down here around Bedford County. And then maybe some pockets right in here, adjacent to Williamson County. And of course, this is core property up in here, so that's really not gonna develop much anything.
Would you, would you say that it's, it's, say, unlikely that in those areas, you would be able to get high density anyway? Cause there's, I mean, like, the south, the south, the east and southeast part of the county, it's all the hills, so-
Well, and I think that's exactly what you're seeing here as a result of this map, is a lot of this area is either, has higher, or I said, has low marks in both of marketability and developability for those reasons. A, topography, B, there's no septic soil, or very little septic soil. I've told people before in some of these areas, cause you know, we've had a lot of conversations about this, and I've told people, some of these areas, you could zone to 100 units per acre. I said, "You've got soil for one house, that's what you're gonna get, doesn't matter what you zone it for." So in those outlying areas, I think you're starting to see, primarily, like I said, in the brown, is that that's exactly what you're seeing in these character areas, for that very reason, is just you're not gonna see that kind of development in these areas. The only way you could get that kind of density is if you had sewer out there, and I just don't see sewer being extended that far in the near future, and even in the distant future, quite frankly.
Doug, I mean, what's the possibilities? I know in some of these areas where it's one per acre, I mean, is there anything in here that would, that would allow for maybe cluster-lotting some things and leaving, leaving a lot of common space, doing some 12,000 or 15,000 square foot lots? And then leaving more than 50 or 60% of your, rest of your land for open space, or for school, or for whatever?
The quick answer is yes, there is. The plan actually does make specific recommendations to look at some different zoning tools, just like you're talking about, conservation design. Those are not, those are not new tools, you know, those are tools that other counties around us currently use. So it wouldn't be a situation where we have to reinvent the wheel. We could take a look at some other ordinances and how it's done in other jurisdictions, and then tailor-make those to how it would fit in Rutherford County. But there's, yeah, quite frankly, there's nothing that says we couldn't do something like that. Be, regardless of what that lot size was, if it was a minimum of a one-acre lot, a minimum of two-and-a-half, minimum of five, whatever it is. And to your point, you know, what do we look at for a minimum lot size in that regard? Do we look at 15,000 square foot lots? Do we look at the possibility of like a 10,000 or 12,000 square foot lot? There are possibilities in how that would work. So yes, the plan makes specific recommendations to look at those kind of land use regulations to help with those kind of situations.
Commissioner Kush?
Thank you. So Doug, you call the green color the rural area?
The rural, yeah, this darker green's the rural living area, correct.
Okay. I like where you're going with the graduated density, perhaps, you know, starting on the outside and working your way in. It could get, you know, more houses per acre. But I like that idea, but obviously, from a common sense standpoint, that would make sense where you have infrastructure already in place, primarily roadway and/or water access, right? So where infrastructure is currently in place, I like that idea. Cause I'm not convinced that with the growth, the population growth statistics, that we're gonna have, my opinion is, we're gonna have to encroach on that rural area anyway for our population growth with homes. So to be strategic in that rural area, to, to double up, double up's not the right word, but to increase density in specific locations where infrastructure is in place, I think could solve a lot of the issues. You know, what we can't do, common sense tells you, we can't keep approving developments towards the outskirts of the county where there's absolutely no infrastructure. We just can't do that. And I think everybody in this room would agree, we can't do that. So I'm, I'm okay with a graduated increase as we get more towards the urban development. Is that what you call it?
The county suburban, the yellow area, basically is what you're talking about.
Right, suburban, I get my, I get my names confused, but the suburban development area, I'm okay with that graduated increase.
Commissioner, when you saw the county map where we show the acre area, the yellow, you see out here towards Eagleville, before, well, some of that, well, that's, Eagleville specifically, the city asked for acre lots. Due to the fact of what they were running into out there, there's a lot of water out there that they have to deal with and things, but they ask for that type of classifications in that area. I do know around the Murfreesboro, the urban growth area and right in there, I've had an opportunity to talk to the mayor, the city councilman up that way. Some of them even suggested that we look at our growth, did its growth go towards the city? Because it helps them, and what they have to plan and what they have to deal with. So, I mean, it's only logical, that's, that's where you go and what you deal with. We have no way out here in this county to build apartments and all this sort of thing, to handle the situation that you got going there. So, it's pretty much, if any land planning that you ever get involved with, that's, that's what this is sort of based on right here. But I know we have some spots out here that it's showing on here. We have people come all the time that want to build some development out that way that I've had a chance to talk to. They come from other parts of, not from here. And then they get out there and all of a sudden, they realize there're sinkholes out there. And I'm not talking about small sinkholes, big sinkholes. And then they realize that they're connected to the water system out there, or a way of moving that water, we all know that. And then they have to come about, oh, okay, how do we handle this? There's one development that we all know out there, that's been here, what, been there two years, that they haven't come back with a way of dealing with that. Have they come to an answer to that yet, out there next to Rockville Meadows? So, you know, it's, when you, once you get past this urban growth area and start coming on the outsides of this county, coming back into this, into the green area, it's no longer the density that you're talking about. It's just hard to do because of what, what is there. It's, it's not, that's the, if you know the creation of Rutherford County right here, that valley down the center was designed for the major part of your good farming. And that's where the good building has been all these years. Once you get out here, you find, wow, those of us who live out here on the outside, why we live there? We don't wanna be bothered, that's why we're out there, but not necessarily, but, I mean, you live there for a purpose. It's small-time farming, it's not, not your bigger acreage, it's, it's, it's where- it's, uh, it's, uh, it's where we, we were able to, to farm and enjoy what we do there. But, it's totally different, what, how we deal with some of these things.
Mr. Chairman. Mike, is your concern that there might be land that would be more appropriate for higher density, that is signaled as a spot with lower density? Is that, like you're saying, there's, there's places where infrastructure is in place to support higher density, but on the map, it's indicated as lower density?
Yes.
Could, could the representatives that made the maps, maybe speak to that? Like, how did you all decide where the, where the density lines were? Because my, my default would be that, that there's nothing, like, like Doug said, there's nothing to prevent someone from applying for a change, and they could show in their application, that they do have the infrastructure in place to support that?
Yeah. Good aft, well, almost afternoon, Jessica Hill, Director of Community and Regional Planning, or Planning Director, works just perfectly. So, to answer the question in regards to the boundaries that were determined for county suburban, the rural living and rural preserve, really follow either the urban growth boundary, as they are today, around the municipalities, specifically for the county suburban, with that three residential units per acre. And then, the rural living really bumped from there out to the rural preserve, which was really set by the constraints of the land and the topography itself. So, really, the two kind of limiting factors were the UGBs, and where there were constraints by the environmental topography of the county. And then, the rural living kinda filled in those areas.
Just, can, can you educate me on the role that roads, water, and the utilities all played into those lines?
Sure. So, the, the suitability maps, so the green one that, if you can go back. Yeah, so, the suitability is a combination of the developability and marketability, and the, I think it's the marketability that has the utili, oh, I got them reversed, it's the marketability, my goodness, developability, that has the mapped utilities and transportation routes, that, so that when you combine them, it got to that dark green, the suitability of where we anticipate. Now, people with time and money can maybe potentially find, make that difference, but the dark green is where we would, or, the green areas is where we would anticipate more growth to be occurring. So, yeah, they, they line up very well, but, you know your county better, if there's an area that you think that needs to be looked at at closer detail, in terms of the future character area, we'd be happy to take any input thoughts that you might have.
Jessica, thank you for always smiling, it actually cheers me up to see you here, smiling all the time. But, this, this plan, if it's adopted, is not carved in concrete, it's not written in blood. So, those type of adjustments could be made in the future, as we see things happening. And there are those areas in green, that are more suitable for, maybe more high density, but those are the things that we can adjust. Not like, you can't do anything in those areas, just like a couple of the other counties that are somewhat contiguous to Rutherford County, they have larger lot sizes. I'd be willing, willing to bet you, that even though there are larger lot sizes, there's a lot of development that goes on in those areas, that are smaller than those lot sizes. I believe that happens quite regularly in those other counties, and there's no reason that it couldn't happen in Rutherford County, is that correct?
You are correct on both of those. The document is not set in stone, it can be amended. We, of course, recommend, for fast growing areas, that comp plans get reevaluated, and just brought back up and reconsidered every five to seven years. You might wanna do an annual check-in, and see how you're doing, so it can be amended. It's built to, or designed to be flexible, knowing that we don't know everything of what's gonna happen in 25 years, except that we know things are gonna change, technology's gonna change, utilities are gonna expand, the growth pattern may change, so everything, it's a guide, it's intended to provide some framework for how to make those decisions. And as far as, I, I'm assuming, I jumped to like a conservation subdivision, when I heard you speaking about the land area, maybe the development not taking up the entire parcel, those are opportunities or options that can be built into the subdivision regulations as a development pattern.
Yeah, a question myself, on identifying those tracks, whether they be brown, way out, we decided we want five acres?
The rural preserve areas?
Yeah, not just that, but just move into the green as well. And I'm gonna commend the map, I said something to Doug earlier, about I had an opportunity to play with that map some this weekend. And in my area, I think it's spot on, to be quite honest with you. Question I think that I would have, as a citizen, looking in those areas, can you tell us how many parcels would be less than five acres, that's out in that brown area, and then going back into the green? If we're looking at, did I hear one acre in the green, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, sir, I believe so.
If we looked at, how many parcels would fall in less than an acre, knowing that folks can come in and get waivers and that type, so we're not changing that, I'm understanding, we're not gonna change that. But, to reduce the impact, have we done studies to know how many different pieces of par, parcels are in the brown, that would be less than five acres? That would put a burden on this group, having listened to exceptions, as well as in the green, how many parcels would fall under an acre, where we got folks coming for exceptions?
That hasn't been done, but it is feasible that we can do that, to identify the parcels that may not currently today meet the minimum lot size, as recommended in the plan. We, it is possible to do that.
Well, while I got this second here, I, two or three things that are interesting to me, on the questions that, that Doug's went over. I don't know hardly how you can answer these questions, okay? When I give questions like this, it's almost like it's a catch. Affordable housing, great question, I think, but, Mike asking that, happened to be in supply house Saturday, and a guy's coming in to buy stuff, based on a conversation he had Friday. Price list had changed from Friday to Saturday morning. Major company, largest company that supplies heating and air and plumbing fittings. The response was, "Sir, did you issue a PO yesterday?" Because our policy is, if you don't issue me a PO while you're on the phone, it's subject to change, hang this phone up. So, that's the burden that the builders are working under, that's the burden that the people are borrowing money to build houses. We all know there's no such thing as affordable housing in Rutherford County today, right? It's just not. So, I think when we talk about that, to get affordable housing for who? What population are we trying to say we're gonna make affordable housing for? Everybody's pocketbook's different. I think that we gotta look at the regulations we have in place, and understand whether or not we're gonna agree that everybody just can't live in Rutherford County anymore. And based on conversations in supply houses, I'd agree that we all don't know whether or not we can afford to live in Rutherford County. So, the other question, looking at parcels, I think's important, to know the impact, because that's what puts burdens on this particular group. I also think that if we would agree that we're gonna manage folks coming in for exceptions, it's more palatable for the citizens, if we know that it's not set in stone, especially when we don't know how many parcels are in the green, or in the brown areas. And if indeed, these parcels that are way out in the brown are not developable, are we trying to control something that maybe we don't even need to control, because it's just not gonna be feasible? If, can't get one house on 100 acres anyway, but yet, we're restricting, telling them you're gonna need five acres for a house? I don't know, I'm struggling with that piece of it, and citizens, I think, do struggle with that piece of it. So, where, where are we headed with this? I don't think it's restrictive, based on the fact of what we can do, what we're having issues with, I'm gonna go back with Mike's thing, driving the housing where the infrastructure's at. If we're gonna do our job, we shouldn't be approving stuff that's putting a burden on our county. Should not, when it comes in here. We don't have the schools, we don't have roads, we don't have infrastructure to handle it, out in those brown areas, we need to stand up and say, "We're not gonna approve that." So, that's my two cents.
And that's what we're trying to do. I mean, legally, we are restricted on what we can say no to. These guidelines will give us the tools to have those regulations in place, that we can have the opportunity to not approve those legally, so, and that's what we're looking for.
Oh, no, I, thank you, Charlotte. I would say, I know that housing affordability is a regional challenge. Even Metro Nashville is in the process of doing a housing strategy themselves, because there is a mismatch between afford, what an individual or family can afford, and what's available, and it's constraining the market. So, it's a shared challenge, I agree.
Jessica, last time you were here, I touched a little bit of on, on this, and I, I just love your maps, and the way you've got everything analyzed, but I wanted to go a little deeper, because your numbers were talking about expected population over the, growth over the next 10 years and 20 years. And unlike Commissioner Phillips, I plan to be here in 20 years, to see it. And, so, I had a question, it, it may not even be in your scope, but I think it's certainly worth looking at. What would be the life expectancy of this proposal, based on realistic terms? You know, we, we know that it's all based on soils. You can only get so much, so many houses with the soils that are available. And there are a lot of parcels that are already developed, and, you know, the people might have five, 10, 20 acre parcels right there in town, and they're not gonna split them up, or there might be industrial on something. What is the realistic life expectancy of this? Can we get 75,000 new homes on, on, in this high, in the area where we want the, the development to be?
Yeah, that's a really good question, and I would say that we have not done, like, a deep analysis to say this meets the entire scope, because there, we know the municipalities are still, are they still in the process of adopting, amending one of their plans, Murphysboro?
I thought they already did, I thought they were done, yeah.
So, as a collective, that population growth will go in the municipalities, but also in the unincorporated areas. So, it really depends on the adopted regulations, the plans that are in place over the next 25 years. And I know that, I can see my partner, Michael Skipper, has something that he would like to add, so...
It, it, Michael, come to the, thank you.
Thank you, Doug, thank you, Jessica. We did do a build-out analysis of the existing policy, when we started this process, and the current entitlements can support more than a million in population. So, this is not so much about constraining opportunity, is, is about optimizing location of that opportunity. So, you're not in any danger of squeezing out the ability for the county to grow by being more thoughtful about where you encourage that growth to go? Second, your question?
It helps, but still, it's, can we get 75,000 homes realistically? On, on this, on what we have there? Yeah, well, we may have to change some regulations, to go three-story units and that sort of thing, a lot of townhouses, it seems like, close to town, but can, is that even possible with the soils that we have?
Well, and I think, and I think Jessica made a mention of this, you know, the overall population growth that we're expected to see is not just in the unincorporated area, it's for the county as a whole, which includes the city limits of Murphysboro, Smyrna, Laverne, and Eagleville. So, we're not talking about all of these people who are coming, are just gonna plop down in the middle of the unincorporated area. You know, there are going to be some, of course, but, I don't think this is a map that's necessarily demonstrating that we can fit every single person who's gonna move here over the next 20, 25 years, cause there are gonna be people that live within the municipalities.
Jim, you, you know, it's, it's, that's a good question. And, and the thing is, is when, I'm sitting here looking at the Eagleville, you look over there, where you got Eagleville, but then out from it, you got green and brown, that little line right there. Last year, last winter or something, I get a call from one of our developers, said he wanted me to meet with somebody, that had come here wanting to put in a development, right out there in that area. And I come out there, and, and he had this development on this map. And I looked at it, I said, "Okay, how many houses you putting in there?" And this guy was from Atlanta. And he really wasn't from Atlanta, he come from New England. He said, "I wanna put 150 houses there." I said, "There?" He said, "Yeah." I said, "You can't do it." He said, "Oh, yeah, I've got the acreage, and I think I can do the density in there to do that." I said, "That's not your problem." I said, "Every two-inch rain, it floods." And I said, "Plus, it's got caves all around it." And he said, "How many do you think I can put in there?" I said, "Well, if you move it to where you got them above ground, and all this sort of thing." And I said, "And then, if you find the soils, you probably could get anywhere from 50 to 70 houses." But, I said, "Have you been on this property?" He said, "No, I'm going there this summer." I said, "Have you been on this property, anywhere near that type of property in the summer?" "No." I said, "Well, you better wear some good boots, cause of rattlesnakes." "Oh, are there problems with rattlesnakes?" I said, "Do you know what a rattlesnake is?" "Um, why?" I said, "You don't wanna buy, oh, are they venomous?" He knew nothing about that sort of, but, but he wanted to put 150 houses on there. If we put on what everybody wants to put on here, we'll get that big total you got out there, but if people would, would listen to these people, and listen to you, and everybody out here, they might get what they want, but they probably won't get what, they'll probably get what they need, not what they want. And, that, that's what we're in, just like what you said right there, the, the soils may not be here, for the numbers that people are saying what we are needing. And, especially when you get out here in these spots, you know, you, you lived out there, you know what's out there. And, that is a very hard one to call, if we went around to every one of them, and looked at them, and what we're seeing right here, and in some of this green area right there, you probably could get more density in some of them. We gotta, you gotta look at the Burgess Farm, how many that, they're gonna be able to get in there, but, but they're got a lot of five acre lots in there, and what we're trying to do. So, I've heard the people telling me how many thousand more houses they're needing, but the possibility of what these soils can carry, especially to the fact of what water we can get to them, and also, we got roads, and then we also got sewer, and all of that to get to them. And you said you wanna be here, what, 25 years from now, is that what you're saying? I wanna know your doctor, cause I, I don't think I'm gonna see that, that's why I've got a little spot out here in Evergreen already, so, I've got that already taken care of.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Can, Mike, can we zoom in on one of the two activity centers, either Buchanan or Amerville? I don't know when these purple circles were, were proposed, but in the past three years or so, there's been a lot of development, particularly inside this one, with more residential properties, so, I guess... particularly inside this one with more residential, uh, properties. So, I guess my question, one concern that I've heard from people in this community, um, was how large that was, and where, what it, what it overlaid, um, particularly like Blue Ribbon Trail, I think is within that purple, uh, spot. So, what, what, um, how, how did we determine the size of this circle, and, or this little, we'll call it a circle, but this activity center, and what recommendations, or what, what influence can we have on the size of that, and where, what it encompasses? I don't wanna get into micromanaging every single line, like, like what we just talked about with Commissioner Kush, is, like, we could blanket, saying things would have to come back before the commission. But my question is particularly around these spots, and, and in the Amerville as well, where the neighborhoods and things have been built recently.
Well, as far as the locations of these, I mean, these pretty much mimic what's already identified as employment centers in our current plan. And, thank you. And, of course, what we ended up looking at on the current plan was, you've got areas that are identified that could be developed in this way. And they were looking at things like you were talking about, the availability of infrastructure, especially out here where you've got existing sewer, and some, uh, you know, water improvements and different things. The roads, you got I-24 right there. Obviously, if you're looking at this, uh, I'll just call it a blob, for lack of a better word. But when you look at the purple blob, yes, it's getting into some of those, uh, more, and, um, residential areas, large lot residential areas. I really don't foresee that kind of development going that far in that area. But even on our current plan, we've got, you know, concern, uh, uh, circular areas identified as a quarter mile, half mile, and a mile from outside of the interchange, uh, the center of the interchange, basically. That doesn't mean that every piece of property you see in that purple area is going to be developed in that manner. It's just identifying, yeah, this is an area that's already been identified like this. And there's potential for that kind of development along the interstate, just because of the fact that there's an interchange there. You got the interstate, you have a certain amount of infrastructure there. But if somebody were to come up and, you know, look at a development, like a mile down Cobb Road, and say, hey, we wanna put an industrial park here, you know, is that really appropriate? Probably not, you know, just because of the fact that that infrastructure, you know, tails away pretty quick, the farther you get from the interchange. So, yeah, I, I, I mean, I can't go into the specifics as far as what the model predicted right here. But as far as I'm concerned, yes, this is identifying an area. But again, that doesn't mean that every property there is gonna be zoned that way. In fact, we know there's some that aren't, aren't ever gonna be. So, that's just the reality of it.
And the same, same would apply over to the Amerville Road 840?
That's correct. Yeah, I'll zoom over that one, too, just so we've got it. Of course, um, you know, I would anticipate, honestly, over time, you probably see this going all the way down to Franklin Road.
That's, that's, I wondered if, if that whole thing should shift down, because there's large neighborhoods there now.
Right. Well, and something to consider, and again, this is something that, from the county, is outside of our control. But something to consider is the fact that the town of Smyrna is currently in the process of designing a sewer line that's gonna run all the way down the creek here, all the way, not all the way to the interstate interchange there, but pretty close. When that happens, of course, now Town of Smyrna is gonna probably be annexing a lot of that property. But that's gonna open up a whole lot of that, which goes back to this whole idea that we kept talking about as far as coordination between the county and the municipalities. Uh, you know, I would anticipate, at least I would hope, that, you know, over the next several years, you know, I won't say 5, 10, just whenever. But it would probably behoove us to have some more targeted area plans, especially considering the fact that you're gonna have a sewer infrastructure coming out here that's gonna completely open up this area. So, be it here, or be it with some other improvements in the city of Murfreesboro with different improvements that they have, I think that's something that we're gonna have to start looking into, just for coordination between what we're seeing from a development standpoint, what the cities may see. We don't wanna be in a situation where somebody goes to the city to present a project, and they say, we really don't want it. And then they come to the county and say, well, you know, the city didn't really want it, but what about you, county? You know, just kinda uses us, or kinda finds the path of least resistance. You know, we don't wanna be in that situation. I'd rather be in a situation where we can both rely on a plan and say, well, the plan in this area recommends this, you're not proposing that. So, no, it doesn't matter who you talk to at that point.
I would, I would, particularly for this, for this section, is to extend that down to, to 96, uh, along Amerville Road, but...
So, you're taking, you're talking, taking this all the way down to 96, is what you're thinking? Okay.
Because we've, there's some, there's our, there's some already zoned commercial properties.
It's industrial, actually, but you're right.
That's correct. Thank you, uh, in that area, so.
That's correct.
Yeah, and I will, sorry, sir. I will add that, um, this is a draft map, so this feedback is great to hear. These boundaries are still movable, um, based off of input. So, yeah, I think any, any comments like that, recommendations, Doug and his team would be happy to take and, uh, provide to us to make amendments.
I know it's getting late, and I know folks are interested in lunch and, and taking their afternoon nap. Uh, but the, couple of these questions, Doug, deal with cost analysis and measure the impact on the housing market and economic development and those type of things. The, the economic impact is not on just the housing development or the real estate development. It's, it's based upon county taxpayers as well, and the economic impact that development has on the taxpayers of the counties. The latest that I've heard, and it's been a while, that property taxes that we collect from an economic, say, an average is 3,500 bucks for average-sized house, as it relates to property taxes, to provide services, if that house has a, um, new house, has a kid and a half, two kids, as an example, to provide schooling, infrastructure, department of safety, such as fire and, and police protection, somewhere in the cost of 15,000 to 17,000 bucks. So, we're collecting, counties collecting $3,500 in property taxes, but spending $17,000, $15,000 to $17,000 in services provided to that one household. So, the, the economic impact doesn't just affect industries that we're talking about, but it has an effect on the taxpayers of the counties. Look at those incorporated areas, then there are boundary areas, and then you look at that. That's somewhere in the neighborhood of 25% of the rest of those areas, especially the incorporated areas, has finances available to, to them that we don't have in the county ourselves. We've got some help in the last couple of years. Still, the economic, not just to the housing industry. Look at it both ways. Let me just ask Jessica or Michael, either one, uh, why are you guys here? Why are you helping us with this situation? What's your reason to exist? And I think some people out there are, are thinking, since you have Nashville in your job description, uh, that you're adversarial to, quote, Rutherford County. So, why are we using you, and why are you here? And what is the concept of regional planning?
Thank you for the question. So, we're fulfilling the mission that was set out for us by the Tennessee Journal Assembly back in the 60s, to help communities across Middle Tennessee plan for their future. So, we do a lot of facilitation between local governments and their communities. Um, so that's primarily why we exist, is just to help you in your day-to-day planning and economic, community development activities. But the other is, from a federal perspective, the federal government is very interested in allocating dollars for infrastructure and social services to regions as a whole, and incentivizing those communities to work together on the best location for those investments. And that's the, the other role that we play in Middle Tennessee, is to convene mayors across the mid-state to cooperatively decide where infrastructure's gonna go. So, the more we're helping you plan the day-to-day, uh, in terms of land use planning, the more appropriate and more refined we can be in ensuring you can get access to those federal dollars for infrastructure as well. Our local governments, this body, the county commission, the chief elected officials of Middle Tennessee. You got it?
Anyone else?
I'm, I'm, we've, I'm on the initial committee that has been with Pettis, that has been working on this for three years now. And I am, I've made it, no one, no one, I haven't made it a secret, I, I'm anxious to get this done. Uh, and Rutherford County needs this to be done. You know, no one could have predicted in 2013, when, or 2011, when this was, the, the last plan was done, that we would have this, uh, boom in population. But we needed this 10 years ago. We definitely need this now. So, uh, what do you need from this committee at this point to move this forward?
Well, I think right now, what we're looking for is just some concrete recommendations. Are we happy with the map the way that it is? Are we happy with the recommended densities the way that they are? I think those are the most important thing. We've already had some discussion about changing that, uh, that activity area over there at, I'm sorry, at Almaville Road, and 840, kind of extending that down a little bit. Maybe, at the same time, trimming that one over there, Depp's Mill Road, uh, just trimming it back some, especially in those areas to the east, once you start getting off the interstate Manchester Pike, looking at that. Uh, the densities themselves, you know, it sounds like, at least we've got the beginning of a consensus of looking at the, the proposed densities in the rural living area. I think we're pretty much settled on what's in the urban growth boundaries, the county suburban. And I think we're pretty well settled in those darker brown areas, the one unit per five acres. But it's that rural living area in the middle, that kind of green area. And something I thought about, and I don't know if this is even practical or not, but when we look at this suitability map, and we see that there are areas that kind of go into the, um, what we are calling this rural living area. Now, of course, it incorporates some of these activity centers and things, too. Do we look at something like maybe breaking the character area for rural living into a couple of different ones? And, and these are sub areas, if you will, like, those areas right around the urban growth area where it has higher marketability, higher developability, identifying those areas, and this kind of gets back to what, uh, Mike Kush was talking about, these areas are probably gonna be more ripe for that kind of development if the infrastructure's there. And then, looking for those areas when you start getting further out toward these rural living, I'm sorry, rural preserve areas, that aren't as much. Maybe you look at kind of breaking that down to two sub areas. I don't know. That's just a thought that I had, sitting here looking at this. We could leave it as just a recommendation in the plan to say, we ident, we realize that there are areas in here that are going to, uh, have a more potential for development due to the fact that they've got better water, they've got better roads, those kind of things. And we'd look more favorable on those kind of things from a rezoning and a density standpoint. Maybe rather than just identifying them on the plan as such, 'cause that might be a little fuzzy, then just keep it in the, the recommendations as recognizing that that's a possibility, that it would be appropriate to see more density in those kind of areas where the infrastructure exists. So that might be a better approach. But, uh, and if we're okay with that, and I think we can relay that, I mean, our, there, Jessica and Michael are both sitting here, they, they're hearing what we're saying. We can incorporate that into the plan. And if there's other changes that need to be made, if we could let them know what those are, at that point, I think we're ready to start bringing this to public hearings. Uh, now, obviously, if there's a public hearing, that doesn't mean you have to make a recommendation right there on the spot. But that would break the, that would give the ability to open it up for everybody for public hearing, put it out there, say, we're gonna have a public hearing on this, and get the community's feedback. Not that we haven't already got feedback, but more feedback into the process, so. I think so. Michael, Jessica, does that make sense to you guys? Do you have anything further you wanna add? Was there anything else that you needed from us at this point? That, okay.
The rural preservation, you're, you're totally right there. There are spots in there, yeah. You, you could build in. I know out there, I'm, I'm in that rural preservation. I've, I've got a gentleman that has bought 56 acres that joins me. Uh, he's got four building spots on 56 acres, is what he's got in that spot. There's places like that, and there's probably other spots that you probably could find more. But that's, that's what's in there. So, I think you leave that at, at rural preservations. But it all depends on what he can come up, what they can come up here and show us. There maybe somebody can find, uh, you know, you can start going down the, um, 231 out here, there are some other areas out there that goes that area. But then there's others that will not show that, but you can find three home building sites, maybe five home building sites. And I think the rural preservation is, is pretty much it. I don't know if, I, I think what might be catching some people, or the rural living, uh, that's, when people hear rural living, they're thinking about a cabin and a dog out front. Uh, that, that may be what is catching their, their, their attention there. I, I don't know. But, uh, but that pretty much catches in this area down in here, and some of that area there. It, it all depends on what people buy and what they've got. Uh, you might buy 200 acres, and you may find the possibility of, possibility of putting 20 houses on it, in some of it, in some places, maybe more, or maybe less. And, uh, that, that's what it's got there. It's a, it's a, it's a gamble on what, what you're getting, and who, what will come for us, and, and what's selected there. But it gives you something to work with, and the people something to work with, so.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say, I, I like Doug's record of making it more, um, along the lines of the suitability map, um, that you also have in there, I think is already on the current, current website. And, and, because I would rather have fewer things up here that we have to just really, well, ultimately deny, because they're just bad proposals. And if we can just get people in the area, that 231 and I-24, how it extends down that way, I think we need to more, use up more of that, because those are state and federal, federal roads. So, we need to encourage development to go to these places, so they're not forced to go to a lot of places that we have to fi, uh, find reasons to deny them and have, and just increase our workload when the ultimate outcome's gonna be the same, anyway. Uh, and I like your idea of maybe stepping it down. So, you know, keeping the one acre closer to town, and going to two and a half along those brown areas or whatever. I, I think you're on the right track. I, I think you should pursue that.
Okay. Do you want the map to be changed to reflect that, or just put in the policies into the plan?
Maps, so that it's printed, uh, in a map format, so people can look at it and say, I have a very high probability of getting a good recommendation from the planning commission in this area than I do over here, instead of us having to just, you, you know, have all these engineers coming to us with all kinds of things and saying, no, 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 you know, that's not gonna work. Let's, let's give them an area that they have a high likelihood to succeed. Does that make any sense?
Oh, makes perfect sense. Yes, sir. I'll have to talk with, uh, Michael and Jessica about how that might work, or how that look. But, uh, but yeah, I, I, I think it's doable. Is it doable? They think it's doable.
Also, is doable to leave it like it is, and then us develop that after we've incorporated the thing? I'd hate to put a lot more work into it in this, us not to develop a plan. But isn't it possible for us to do that, and that'd be the first thing we'd work on?
I mean, really, we're, we're kind of a blank slate at this point. What do you guys wanna do? If that's what the route you wanna go, I mean, I think that is a possibility. I guess a lot of it depends on, if we have a public hearing, if we're thinking about moving in that direction, do we wanna have this ironed out before we get to that point? I think is what we really need to ask.
I know you think I'm fussing at you, and I am not fussing at you. I want it to come to an end.
Yeah. You're, you're preaching to the choir, Mr. Chairman.
By the time we have one of these meetings, let's work on this, let's work on this, let's work on this. I want it done. And as chairman of the county commission, I want it done this summer. I want you to bring it to the county commission before the end of the summer. My challenge, that's my challenge to you guys.
Well, I think a lot of what you're already talking about is accommodated in the text of the document. So, all of these have ranges associated with them. So, the idea of stepping up or stepping down, that's just your practical application of the plan, not so much a map. So the idea of stepping up or stepping down, that's just your practical application of the plan, not so much a map. I think, though, based on the conversation, the one thing that Jessica and I think could be appropriate, in addition to zooming into those purple blobs, make sure that they align with your expectations. And really, those, you ought to be doing specific area plans for anyway. The comp plan is a broad vision, but you'll work with the community in those areas to spell out the specifics. Is maybe a consideration for extension of the suburban character area into the areas you know have high marketability and high developability already and not constrain those to the UGVs. So I think that, from a mapping standpoint, might be one of the areas that would make the most sense to look at.
And I think that's what, exactly what Jim was talking about, yeah.
But, Michael, for that to be accurate, do we not need to have soils knowledge beforehand before we put any renderings on a map?
I think, you know, that's, and this map shouldn't allow the staff and the planning commission away from their duties to look at the data that's available to you in real time. So the suitability map that we have is more, and that's something that we can keep maintaining for you all. The suitability, the character area map is your policy that is more than about data. It's also about public input. Where does the public want to see growth? And sometimes that has nothing to do with what the soil data is saying. So that's a composite of all the inputs. We can maintain this for you. We already do anyway for all 13 counties that we represent. So at any given time, you're looking at a proposed development within any of these character areas. We can help you assess the underlying conditions that are in place at the time that you're assessing that development.
So just because, and that kind of gets back to what we're talking about with the activity center areas. Just because it may be identified, let's just say that this gets extended out here just a little bit for the sake of argument, kind of based on what we've been talking about. Just because it's in one of these areas doesn't necessarily mean that it automatically is going to get approval. Because if that were the case, we would just do the zoning map identically to that and boom, we're done. There'd be no reason to have public hearings. But there are going to be situations where someone says, "Well, it's identified as this in this plan." We're going to look at it and say, "Yeah, but your roads aren't any good, and you don't have enough soil to do this anyway, and this really isn't appropriate regardless of what this says." Maybe if the roads were out here, infrastructure was a little better, yeah, we can see that happening here. But that's not the case. So that doesn't take away our ability to evaluate a project on a case-by-case basis in light of what the recommendations of the plan state.
So your rural, or your suburban, the green, you may have blobs or rectangles of suitable higher density. You're not going to, you're not going to have specific lots or...
Right. Yeah, I don't think this is correct, Michael. I mean, correct me if I'm misstating it, but the whole purpose of this plan is not to be parcel-by-parcel specific. It's to identify the whole area that, in this area, yes, it could happen. But we still have our responsibility to look at this from a case-by-case basis, parcel-by-parcel, whenever we see a project.
I think it leaves us, as it sits now, it leaves us the flexibility as a lower zoning or lower density to leave it as it is instead of extending that urban down and then have the argument the other way. I'd rather kind of know we're going to have that transition zone, say, along those 41, 231, whatever that may be, than to go color that in and now it's an argument the other way. So I'd rather just leave it and then know we'll look at it on case-by-case for infrastructure soils and other things that support it.
Follow-up one more time. What I want done, and may not be the best, okay? And I've repeated myself many, many times that I want it done right. Timing is becoming more and more of an issue. And I'd like to see us expedite this thing. I'd like to see us bring a draft to be adopted before the planning commission early this summer. And I'd like to see it go before the full county commission. And if it's adopted by the planning commission, go before the planning commission. Once again, we can be putting more and more time into this, and it may not pass the county commission. They may have different ideas that they want adjusted. Needs to, we need to stop talking, and we need to...
Understood.
I'd like to see that expedited as much as possible.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. I feel like we're making it dynamic without implementation. We need implementation and then continue with the dynamic conversations. I couldn't believe it was still three years. I was like, "Good night. We've got to do something."
We'll take the suggestions that have been put here and try to do what we can do here, come up with a date where we'll come back.
Yeah, and I'm thinking, and I'm just spitballing some ideas right now. We have to, before we have a public hearing, it has to be notified in our normal legal notices, has to be notified at least 30 days in advance. So realistically, we're looking in June probably at this point, which is fine. I would recommend we do this on a night where we don't have anything else, like maybe a special meeting of the planning commission just because of the fact that, A, we never know what we're going to get from a public hearing standpoint on a month-to-month basis for rezoning applications. And two, I really don't, even if it's just one application, I would rather not have anything fighting for attention for this. So I would be recommending just a standalone date. So we'll kind of reach out to you with some, I know we're getting into the summer, you know, vacations and things, but we'll at least get some possible dates. I've already got some kind of floating around in my brain. But we'll get those out to you just to kind of see what looks good from a scheduling standpoint. If everything looks pretty good, then we can kind of go from there.
Okay. Anything else to come before this group? If not, we are adjourned.